All right, well, good start. Is everybody ready? Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, December 10, 2024. The time is 5:30 PM. We have a large agenda for today, and I just want to remind everybody before we get started, at 6:01 PM, we will recess the council meeting and hold the Truth in Taxation meeting and set the here about the levy, and then we'll continue on with the council meeting and to its conclusion. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Motley?
Here.
Freedleeb?
Here.
Paulson?
Present.
Yandich?
Present.
Johnson?
Here.
Aaron Zelli?
Yes.
Huffy?
Present. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, with item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council this evening on any matter, it's of course to them or their community. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to sit before the council meeting today? Please come forward. Please turn the light to green. Please state your name for the record, and welcome to the city council meeting.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Katie, and I live in Virginia and pay taxes here. I have some questions about the budget. Is this an okay time to bring that up, or am I supposed to wait till the Truth in Taxation?
Well, you'll have an opportunity to address the council during the Truth in Taxation meeting as well, but if you have something else you'd like to address right now, you're welcome to do so.
I'll wait. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move to item five, the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councilor or citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and correction of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on November 26, 2024, and the public hearing minutes from November 26, 2024. Item 5.2 is adoption of Finance Resolution Number 24-023, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is approved pay spent number six to Minnesota Boardwalks in the amount of $44,109.45 for the Silver Lake Trail Phase 2B. Item 5.4, approved pay spent number five to Bissabah Batubinas in the amount of $500,915.24 for the 2023 Street Improvement Project, which occurred between Sixth Avenue West and 17th Street South portion of this project. And finally, item 5.5, approved pay spent number seven to Carl Sanderson in an amount of $1,649,652.46 for the Virginia Public Safety Project. These are the consent agenda items brought before the council today, looking for council action.
I'll move the approval of the consent agenda as it's been presented.
A council freely moves to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there support? By Council Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item six, appearances. There is no unscheduled period before the council this evening, so moving on to number seven, unfinished business, item 7.1, the clinic lease. We have our legal council here today as a bit of right in information on an update respect to our clinic lease.
The only update I have tonight is that the meeting did occur between them and that they're continuing to have conversations.
Yes, and we did have between our between your firm and our city staff, we did have a meeting with essential officials last week, and are furthering the negotiations moving forward, so thank you. Nothing else. Okay, thank you. All moved on item number eight, discussion items. Item 8.1 is approve the 2025 tobacco licenses for the following businesses. Item 8.1A, Edwards Oil Incorporated, doing business as Lucky Seven Northside. Can we approve all this at one motion? Item 8.1B, Edwards Oil, doing business as Lucky Seven Hoover Road. Item 8.1C, Miners Incorporated, doing business as Super One Foods North. Item 8.1D, Miners Incorporated, doing business as Super One Foods. 8.1E, Mean You LLC, doing business as Rocket Liquor. Item 8.1G, CMB Warehouse Distributing Incorporated, doing business as the Virginia Short Stop. 8.1H, CMB Warehouse Distributing, doing business as Virginia Short Stop Express. Item 8.1I, Super One Liquor LLC, doing business as Super One Liquor. Item 8.1J, Capital Retail LLC, doing business as Joe's Quick Mart. Item 8.1K, Mike Waswas, doing business as Super Smoke Shop Virginia. And item 8.1L, Dennis Yorzak, doing business as the New Zet.
I'll move the 2025 tobacco licenses.
Council Motley moves to approve the 2025 tobacco licenses, supported by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.3, approve the 2025 secondhand goods license for the following businesses. Item 8.3A, Priscilla Treisman, doing business as Jackie's Addict Thrift Store. And item 8.3B, Rachel Strasser, doing business as Rachel's Thrift Store. And 8.3C, Anthony Alta Bell, doing business as Power Play Sports.
I'll move to approve.
Move to approve by Council Paulson is their support. By Council Freedleeb, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.4, approve the 2025 Solid Waste Haulers License for Waste Management.
I'll move.
Move to approve by Council. Motley is their support? By Council Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.5, approve the 2025 Massage Licenses for 8.5A, Annie Mo, doing business as Heinta H&amp;H. And item 8.5B, Tara Trocano Reinerson, doing business as Bear Rhythms at the Blue A Salon and Spa LLC. Item 8.5C, Susan Santi, doing business on Massage LLC. Item 8.5D, Wendy Lindsay, doing business as the Pebble Spa Company. And item 8.5E, Mary Jo Lance.
So moved.
Move to approve by Council Motley is their support? By Council Freedleeb, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.6, approve the 2025 Kennel License for Shaggy's LLC, doing business as Shaggy's Goomin Board. Move to approve by Council Freedleeb and supported by Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.7, approve the 2025 Pond Broker License for Thomas Anderson, doing business as Northstar Pond and Gun Incorporated.
Approve.
Move to approve by Council Paulson, is there support?
Support.
By Council Biondich, is there any further discussion? Both at the same time, so I took a shot. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.8, adopt the resolution to approve the payment of routine bills and expenses for fiscal year 2024 due to the December schedule. Move. Move to approve by Council Freedleeb, is there support?
Support.
By Council Johnson, is there any further discussion? Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. So in the resolution, or I don't know if it's just the information, it's approving up to what amount? Was it up to like 20,000 for an emergency? Or is that in there? I thought I read that. I just was wondering. Sorry, our internet is out. It gave the situations what we would be utilizing this resolution for. So it definitely was routine bills and expenses, then it said.
Sherry.
25,000. And that would be for what type of an expenditure, should something like that?
Any and all expenditures are specifically provided for in the budget as approved in its final form by the council, provided those expenditures do not exceed 25.
Okay, so it's not any one thing that you could foresee coming forward?
No, I can't, and it's hard to, we can't, we can't, I can't even think of what it could be. I mean, we're trying to get as much as we can done this next week.
Okay.
This week.
Okay.
But there's always going to be some bill that's going to come in.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Paulson. Has it been moved and supported? Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.9, adopt a resolution ordering the improvement, approving final plans and specifications in ordering advertisement for bids for the city of Virginia 2021/2023 Street and Infrastructure Improvement Project, Phase 1, Stage 2 Local Government Improvement Project with amendments number one, known as the 2024 Street and Alley and Infrastructure Improvement Project, and we had the public hearing earlier today. Move. Move to approve the resolution moving forward by Council Freedleeb, is there support? Is there support? Support by Council Biondich, is there any further discussion? First, Council Johnson, then we'll go to Council Paulson, and over to Council Motley. Council Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be participating in the discussion and will recuse myself because it is my, one of my alleys.
Well, thank you, Council Johnson, recuses as a personal conflict there. Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we just had the public hearing. Is there a deadline that we actually have to give this approval in the fiscal year of 2024? Or is this something that we could have further discussion upon after absorbing the information that was presented at the public hearing?
Matt, do you have any?
Well.
Sorry, Matt.
Matt? I think the biggest thing would be if we decide to move forward with it, to make sure that we make a decision soon enough so that we can get advertised and get in a decent bidding climate. If we wait too long, we get into a situation where the contractors start to get their schedules full, and we get less bidders, and prices tend to go up the longer into the spring we go, so.
I think what I also heard is that there needs to be determination regarding the sidewalk.
We can, we can deal with that at any point, if we, even if we had it out for bids, we could pull it out in an addendum if we had to. So that's, that's not a real big concern for me, as long as it's resolved within a few weeks here.
Okay, but there's nothing that states we have to do this before the fiscal year 24 ends?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you, Matt. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Motley, and then we'll go back over to Council Biondich. Council Motley.
Yeah, my question was in regards to the sidewalk also. If we went out for bids, construction was going to possibly start in May of '25, so it's coming fast. Okay, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Once we go out for bids, it does have to come back to the council to approve the bids and award the bids. So there's still stopgaps here that if we decide it's too expensive, it didn't come in what we expected for budget, we still have ways to mediate the cost or changes if we have to. If it comes in way over budget, then we come back together and say, let's talk about removing some things or doing something different or.
Can I answer your question, Council Motley? Council Biondich?
And I did, when we had that meeting, I did ask some of the questions on that sidewalk to bring the cost down, and as it was explained to us, this is the high end, that we would be working down from that and seeking other grant opportunities to help, help offset this, and that there is communication with the property owners on this, correct? So I think I tried to cover some of that in our earlier meeting to keep, make sure that the people that it affects, there's a chance for them to communicate and still work on that sidewalk issue, that if it, if they choose not to do that, we pull it out of the plan, that drops the cost down. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Biondich. Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'm still, I was unable to make the meeting right at 4 o'clock, but I'm still processing information that was discussed at the public hearing. And my concern is for those people that expressed maybe the project would not directly impact the, they didn't see an actual benefit of this project to their personal residents as well as the affordability of the assessment. And I really like some more time to weigh that out and to talk with the residents that it would impact in that area. So at this point, I think if we have to, if we are voting on it, I probably wouldn't support it at this time, mainly because I'm looking to get some more feedback. And I'm just, again, I'm concerned with the affordability, and at what point do we say, you know, they were given the full assessment, approximate what you had tonight, and then that was at the, what was that, at the 40%? And it could go as low as 25%, but no lower?
20.
20%. I guess I just, I, for me, I just would like to wait a little bit further before I would feel comfortable voting this through. So I just, that's where I'm landing on this one. I just would like to take a little more time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council Biondich, and then over to Council Motley. Council Biondich.
We have another meeting on next week, is that correct? Could, would that week give you enough time to look things over? So if we amended the motion and, or, I don't know how we do that, but could we put it on the agenda for the next meeting? That would still be before the end of the year? And that would give you time to feel comfortable with it? So how, how would we proceed? Do we vote it?
Make of the motion rescind the motion, the second rescinds that second, and then we have another motion moving it forward if that, if that moves.
Yeah.
Yes, please, Council Freedleeb.
Just a reminder that we did procure three some odd million dollars for this project in federal funding. I don't know that there's a timeline or a deadline for us to utilize that funding, and we've already had three public hearings on this project to this point in time. So I, in my mind, it's time to move forward. I know there is opposition, but that's not uncommon for essentially every decision that we make in this chamber. So in any event, I think we have to think in terms of what kind of improvements we will be making in that area as opposed to, how do I say that? I mean, that's not to be insensitive to the, the costs that are going to be incurred, because there are going to be costs to be incurred, but the costs are bringing forth significant improvements to a majority of that area of town, maybe not specific residences per se, but a majority of those that have been earmarked for that project. So that's all I have to say, that's why I made the motion to move it forward.
Okay, thank you. Council Motley?
For me, I'm also fine with pushing this off till next week. It's a special meeting, so there is no two-step process. It's, would be a done deal next week. Also, that would give our city staff or you, Matt, time to get in touch with taxpayers who might be affected by that sidewalk possibly being pulled, and we might get a little follow-up on that next week if possible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, for me, I'm prepared to move forward with this, setting up for bids, whatever needs to be done with respect to what the resolution says, because we're not spending money, we're putting out for bids, determining what's going to cost. When we find out what those bids are, we'll have other information coming in as to whether or not we have additional grants moving forward. Putting those bids out there kind of locks it, and if we're comfortable with the bids, we can always reject the bids, we go and not move forward with the project at all. I don't see any reason why to push it off. It, we've had, this is the third public hearing, and so I'm sensitive to the angst people have as well, but this is a project that we vetted out, this is four years in the making, and so by, there's a motion on the phone a second to move this forward. If it goes off for bids, if we don't, we don't like the bids, we want to reject the bids, or something else come up, we can't find the money, we don't want to spend, then we can, we can reject the bids. We don't have to spend the money. We're not voting to spend money, we're just putting, voting to put this out for bids. So that's where I stand. So it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Freedleeb?
Aye.
Paulson? Yandich?
Aye.
Johnson?
Recused.
Aaron Zelli? Huffy?
Aye.
Motley?
No.
Four, aye, two, nay.
Pass. Motion passes, four, two, with one abstention. Thank you. Yeah, item 8.10, do we wait and hold that in advance and have the meeting at 6:01? So we'll hold 8.10 in advance, which is adopt the resolution approving the 2025 levy. We'll hold the levy hearing at 6:01 PM as required by law, so we'll continue on with the council meeting until that, until we get to 6:01. So move to item 8.11, adopt a resolution approving the 2025 budget. We move with that? Same thing. So we'll hold those two in advance, 8.10 and 8.11. Move to item nine, committee reports, item 9.1, the Committee of the Home Meeting, which was held on December 3, 2024, and we'll turn this portion of our city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britsy Bennett. Pris.
Thank you. At the Committee of the Home Meeting on December 3, Nancy and Deb Andrews from the Saudi Humane Society discussed their request for the renewal of the contract for the Humane Society for 2025. They explained that the Humane Society is in a tough financial position, so they are seeking additional funding. We had great discussion about possible ways that we could help them increase their revenue. ways that we could help them increase their revenue. It was moved and supported to direct staff to assist the Savi Humane Society to help in grant writing and support in seeking other fund sources.
So moved. Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to also approve the Savi Humane Society contract for fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $45,000.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Counselor Motley, supported by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Sean Lewis from Cross Anderson was present to discuss information on the change orders for the Virginia Public Safety Center. The building is moving right along, and the snow does not help with the roof placement. The roof is approximately 40% to complete. Of the snow, I'm sure has, has created a little bit of a delay in the roofing. Mr. Lewis explained the first change order, change order number 17 was required due to the removal and replacement of concrete drivings first on Second Avenue and the reinforcement that was required for the concrete patches. Once the holes were dug, the crews needed more epoxy and epoxy dowels, and they also needed to include concrete valley gutters, which were not called for in the plans. It was moved and supported to approve change order number 17 for the civil order change, civil changes related to Second Avenue concrete replacement, which increased, increased the contract by Cross Anderson by $77,539.54.
So moved. Support. Moved by Counselor Freely to approve and supported by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve change order number 18, which is for the canopy roof drains and the added heat tape. As for the recommendation of the plumber and the installation of some pumps and lieu of canopy drains, increasing the contract with Cross Anderson by $6,526.67.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Lewis reported that change order number nineteen was for dryer vents that were inadvertently removed from the project when we were doing the value engineering. They needed to be put back. It was moved and supported to approve change order number nineteen for dryer vents, increasing the contract with Cross Anderson by $1,783.32.
So moved. Motion to approve and by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? By Counselor Barnzeli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Change order number 20 was a discussion regarding the size of the gear wash sink. Sean Lewis did a great job explaining that the gear wash sink that was called for was a three-bay sink and really what the staff wanted was a two-bay sink. We had a lot of discussion at the meeting. I did speak to Sean Lewis after our council meeting, and Cross Anderson has decided to include it under their contingency, not our contingency. So it's part of their project, thankfully. So thanks to Cross Anderson for understanding that's really what we want, and it was helping us get what we really want in that building for our future.
Mr. Brian Silver, Parks and Recreation Director, presented information on the proposed splashpad. He has worked with some companies to do some preliminary work on the project to create a site plan. He has presented it to the Park and Recreation Commission, and they are on board with the project. And he was at the committee, the whole to auth, to ask for permission to authorize staff to proceed with soliciting grants and sponsorships for the proposed splashpad project at Silver Lake.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Beyondich. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the submittal of a American Library Association grant for the library bathroom renovation project.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? By Counselor Freely. Any further discussion? Counselor Beyondich?
Sorry.
Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We had discussion with Mr. Brian Silver regarding the purchase of beverage carts for the golf course. The current carts that we have are 22 years old, and we're having many, many problems with them. After discussion, it was moved and supported to refer to staff for more information on the purchase of the two Easy Go beverage golf carts. In your packet, I did prepare a memo that states that we do have funding in the contingency. There's a small in revenue in the golf course, and the leaseholders of the restaurant have indicated they are interested in discussing a profit sharing during the summer months for the beverage carts. They would like to open and amend their contract.
Hey, thank you. I did have a discussion with Brian Silver about sponsorships, exclusivity of, of beverage and alcohol services to, as a sponsorship, to do some exclusive advertisement on the golf carts to advertise people, businesses. As Brian Silver said, he would get some additional information and present it to the council at the next committee, the whole meeting in the first of the year.
Here.
Uh, yes, Counselor Freely.
Has there been two beverage carts that have been servicing the 18-hole golf course to this point? They're exhausted, so to speak.
Correct.
Uh, they have used, uh, two, three, or even four during some major events, but we only have two beverage carts. They use a regular cart to haul out water, things of that nature. But we traditionally ran two golf beverage carts for the large events.
I would move the approval of the staff to obtain more information.
Okay, moved by Counselor Freely. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So what we're moving forward is just staff getting more information, not the purchase.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Ree Coughlin from the Iron Trail Motors Event Center was present to discuss the Minnesota Power sponsorship agreement. They are requesting to sponsor the complete ballroom as one section, not just one section, as a 10-year agreement. Excuse me, in your packet, you'll find the sponsorship agreement with Minnesota Power for the naming rights of the ballroom at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
We'll move the agreement. Counselor Johnson moves to approve the agreement. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Number J was the motion to table the contract for the public access television. For further information, I just have an update today that he will, Steve Rockla will be at our meeting next Tuesday on the 17th to talk with the council.
Thank you. Mm-hmm.
Um, item K was the, we approved, it was a motion from, after discussion with Deputy Chief Johan, Jonason, boy, I can't talk today, for the 2024 ambulance purchase that will be delivered in 2026. The price, if we order it today, will be locked in once the agreement is made and can be paid for upon delivery. It was moved and supported to approve the proposed quote for the purchase of a 2024 Ford F-550 four-by-four Super Duty chassis ambulance in the amount of $395,844.
And that's delivery in a couple of years?
Two years.
Yep, thank you. So moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we, we'll recess the council meeting, uh, stop at item nine point one K, and we have some additional items to do, to consider at the council meeting agenda here. But we will recess the council meeting now to move to the truth of taxation hearing, which is required by law. It's now six oh one PM. And we'll move to item nine point, be eight point one zero, adopt the resolution approving the levy for 2025. Would you have some discussion first then? Looking for.
Sherri has a presentation.
Pardon?
Our finance director, Sherri Erickson, has a presentation.
Sherri, okay. Sherri, you ready to make that presentation regarding our 2025 levy? Before we make any decision about adopting the resolution to, to adopt the levy, we're here for your presentation and likely hear from others as well. Sherri?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Thank you and counsel. Bear with me on this.
Yeah. And Sherri has a power presentation to make to those who are in attendance and those who are listening at home.
Oh, she's not hot. Not liking me.
She doesn't like anybody.
Okay. Okay, if I can get the most to work for me. I want to thank everybody for coming, and we will have a question and hopefully answer session at the end. So basically, this is by law that we do a property tax, truth and taxation hearings, so that we get participation from the public on how the city should set the budget for the following year, 2025 year, and recommendations. So in January, your county assessor will assess real and personal property. By March 31st, you should be able to have your property statements be sent out. You should be getting that for the current year. So next year in March 2025, you should get your actual property statements, which are due then in April and May. Um, well, May, sorry, but in April is usually, right, Pam, when we have our board of review. Um, that is where if you feel your value or your tax is too high, your value, your tax is set on your property value. So we do not assess your property's value. We have sent it over to the county. That's been about, I'm gonna say seven years now since the county's been doing it. So they do have a board of review, which they'll hear you out. Um, and there, I'm not saying it's yes, that you can get it reduced, but they will review it, and there is a possibility you'll get your taxes reduced. The final budget and levy must be adopted before end of the December this year, certified to the county auditor and to the state. The final levy cannot exceed our preliminary levy, which we set in September at 8%, um, with an overall proposed tax levy of 5.5. Why the lower in the numbers? Because we had a reduction in our debt. Your final levy set will be reflected on your 2025 statements. So we can't go higher than 8%, but we can go lower. Before setting the actual levy, the city council must estimate and expect our expenses for next year. Well, we already have four contracts, and they were all settled this year. Uh, so the wages and salaries and benefits are pretty much set already as part of the expenses for this year. We have to have a balanced general fund. In order not to transfer from reserves to the general fund, we set it at 8%. The city only receives what it levies. So for 2025, that will be $8,153,892. That is the total proposed levy at 5.5. And that's due to, like I said, the debt reduction. If you look on this paper with your notice of the truth and taxation, you will see last year's debt was a little bit higher than this year. Here's a comparison, and I apologize if it's pretty fine. Font size is pretty small, but you can see the difference from the general fund. It's an increase of $440,000, $440,697. The decreases come in the P and H levy, reduction of $15,000, and then the decrease in the overall 23 equipment bond, another $33,149. That's why it's at 5.5. There's the general fund expenditures. You can see for public safety, which includes fire and police, is at, is pretty close to over $8 million. So that doesn't all come from the levy. We have other external revenues that are coming in, such as LGA, your tachinide aid, uh, different fees and fines, mining effects tax. Uh, we do get fire and police state aids. Here's a bit of a graph. You can see the general fund in our use of the operating levy. If I'm standing in the way, we'll just, please. And you do have, if that's hard to read. You need one, sir? Mr. Nelson? Here's a pie. Maybe that's easier to see. Um, 42% of our budget. Can everybody hear me without this? What's that, hon?
Better.
Better, okay. Um, is our public safety. And I think they do a really good job. Our police and our fire and ambulance, um, they cover not just Virginia, but they cover a large, large area. Um, we have a lot of mutual aid, so we're helping a lot of other surrounding communities. Um, so they're well worth it, okay? Your streets and highways, this last snowstorm, you can see you had the value in that. And that is at 23% of our budget. If we were going to do any reduction, it would have to come in the culture and recreation, miscellaneous, or their general government. When the city of Virginia issues debt, it has to be paid back by levies, not fees or other special revenues. The principal and interest payments that are due are levied in a debt service levy to cover the debt service payments. Um, I think we touched on it a little bit with the hearing earlier today. This mechanism is often used for permanent improvements like street projects and large equipment purchases, such as the ambulance, our fire truck coming up, um, public works equipment, and currently 24%, 24 cents of every dollar of your city tax is for debt levy. The 2025 levy for economic development tax abatement arrangements, we right now have three active agreements. One that is probably the oldest on the books is the P and H, Line Pro, what is it called now? Kamatsu? Yeah, it's changed names several times. But, um, that is at 100% tax abatement on that one. Uh, the other one is we do have the mall project, which we're excited about because I want you to realize the more business that we get in here, they spread the tax wealth a little bit better, a lot, a lot more easier on the residential's with. little bit better, a lot more easier on the residentials with more commercial in. Enterprise funds. Our Washington Manor, that's the, they're pretty self-sufficient. They pretty much take care of themselves with their rental. Solid waste right now is at 1.5 million. Golf course is at 445,000. These are expenditures now. The restaurant is at 73,000. But we do have new lease and new tenants in there that, like as mentioned earlier, they're really willing to help, help the expenses out and help run the restaurant and the golf course more productive. This last summer, because of the light snow season we had, we were able to open earlier in the golf course and we actually had a very good season. So that's good to know. The sewer and wastewater is currently at 3.1 million. And then we are in the process of talking with Ascension about the clinic lease capital. Levy and budget recap. You have the general fund net operating levy at 5,949,414. And then we have a VITA levy in there that's $94,483. P&amp;H tax abatement levy, that's $134,984. Our debt levy on our A and B, because of our sales tax, it's been pretty healthy. That would be over a million dollar payment. We just made it. We just made it this hospital, today it came out of the bank. And it's over a million dollars. But because of our sales tax, we had enough money, you don't have to have a levy. So once again, once we bring in those commercial properties and those businesses, it just helps us all around. The next one is the street and alley 21A project. That's $274,442. And I think there was a question brought up earlier about, yeah, if it's not assessed, whatever the difference is, it's levied. Our 2023 public safety center bond is at 1.1 million. And debt levy for the 2023A equipment bond is $600,569. Fines, fees and other revenues is $12,244. So there's our revenue. And I'm sorry if I'm blocking the expenditure on that side. This here is a disclaimer. I'll be right up front. I got this from the St. Louis County, Brandon Larson, he sent it out to me and a bunch of other cities. What I've been told is that pretty much at an 8% levy, we will have a reduction in property taxes, at least on, so on both, commercial, but I see the commercial is cut off on the bottom there, but on residential. Now, I've had two property owners in Virginia tell me that their taxes have gone down. So I'm not saying it's gonna go down for everybody because there's a lot of things that contribute to your tax increase. First of all, the city of Virginia is not assessed all at one time. It's divided up over the years in sections. So even though this one was assessed here, this one probably was assessed two years ago, it's not gonna have the same market value as the new one. Not only that, if you put in new siding, decks, any type of improvement to your property, it will increase your market value. So there's my disclaimer. If you want to dispute that, I will definitely put you in touch with Brandon Larson. It's just a gauge to help see the impact overall on the city. Here is some links. I think they're in your handout, too. There's help for senior citizens in their property tax. There's also veterans with disability and then other property tax programs. And you should also take advantage of the property tax refund. If your property tax has gone up extremely a lot, I suggest you file and get a property tax refund. It's a separate form and I forgot what the number was. Does anybody help me out here? For the property tax? You probably just have to go on the first one up there and see what the form is and That's about it?
Yeah, please come forward. Thank you. And state your name for the record and welcome to city council meeting, or actually the truth taxation meeting, so we can have a record of it. Thank you very much.
I'm Kathy Katie from Virginia Sherry. My understanding that our taxes went down this year is because of a one-time tax abatement project by Lilahog and Hoshchild, and it's a one-year thing. Does anybody not familiar? Is it mayor? Do you have any?
There's a, there was a bill that was introduced for one-time property tax relief for people with certain property values. Yeah, but this is separate from that. Our debt levy, our property tax value went down. You should be realizing that additional from the, from the state, I don't know when that is, the county manages that. So I wish I could answer it for you, Ms. Katie, but I can't.
Okay. Then I have some other questions, if I can ask.
Please do.
What have we saved money on in the city since the last year's levy?
Thank you, mayor, council, and Kathy, Katie. Offhand, I would have to research and think back because I'm not prepared for that, but I do know that we have some proposals going forward that we are working on that, yes, will save the citizens money and eventually the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you. Then what is the ITMEC budget and how much are they losing every month?
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, mayor. I do have an answer to your previous question. Fees and charges for parks and rec programs went up significantly. Baseball went up such as so much that the little league club, whatever they're called, actually had to budget to keep fees affordable for students. I can also tell you this council and many of, the only travel and training that was done this year was very specific. The council was not allowed to do any travel or training, which, to my opinion, much to the detriment of our cohesiveness and our ability to continue to lead and make connections. So there have been things that have happened over the year that weren't spent on only necessary repairs. A lot of preventative stuff wasn't done because it wasn't in the budget.
Okay, thank you. How many employees have you laid off or added since the last levy?
We haven't laid off any. We have not filled some vacancies and we also have lost some employees.
Oh, is there a hiring freeze or?
No, there's not a hiring freeze. We've lost some employees because they either resigned or moved on and, or retired.
Do you continue to increase the budget every year? And if not, what are your plans to live with the reduced budget?
And you could, you can add this on if you would, Sherry. There's really two areas that we can cut in the budget significantly. One is salary and benefits for our staff and the other is reduction in services, which equates to a reduction in staff. So if we look at the 2025 budget moving forward, as our city finance director indicated, we have individual positions that have not been replaced. Although the money is still budgeted for those, we have made a decision on who's gonna be replacing, who doesn't. There have been some retirements. We're looking at whether or not those positions need to be replaced. If so, it depends upon if it's emergency services or if it's public works or if it's public park and rec. So with the reduction of staff, equates to a reduction in services. So if we do reduce staff, that means we have to reduce services. So there's only, there's only really two places that we can actually cut and that's staffing and, and the equipment, capital equipment. And not just long-term equipment like a ladder truck or ambulance, which is, ambulance is two to three years old before you can get one, the ladder truck's five years old before you can get one. It's the regular costs we have associated with that. So if there's equipment that has to be purchased, we hold those in advance. And some of the equipment that we're doing is leasing as opposed to purchasing because it's cheaper for us to do that in the long, in the short run. So those are some of the things that are being done. Like I said, we still have money in this 2025 budget for the staffing. There are other things that we're looking at with respect to contracts, looking at reducing the services by outsourcing. That's been probably publicly disseminated throughout the public that we're looking at a variety of things, whether it's concessions at the Iron Trail Event Center, whether it's garbage service, whether it's custodial services, those kind of things are all being considered moving forward. But right now, for the end of 2025 budget, the money is still budgeted in there. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna spend that, but in the event that those positions are not gonna be filled, the money's there just in case. So we could reduce costs associated with that. I don't know. That's a decision we have to make and we have to weigh in 2025 where our salary, where our positions are within whatever department we have and determine can, can those, are staffing reductions prudent or not? And then how much is that gonna affect the service that we provide to the citizens?
Okay, thank you. And then my last, well, there's one more. Why is the library operating on shortened hours with same amount of staff?
I think we have one position that's, that's still hasn't been filled, that's the youth services position, I think, that we, I think we're in the process of doing that. There was some issues with, can I say? Jody could probably explain some of the reasons why. Maybe, thank you, Jody, for coming. If you could explain to Ms. Katie, you know, some of the reasons why you shortened the hours to the library?
Yeah, we didn't have staff. So we were in the process of hiring the youth services person. She started last Monday and then one of our other aides moved to South Dakota. And so I was down 56 hours and then it was hard to keep open all those hours and then people got sick. And then, so we just shortened hours to make sure that we had consistent hours for the staff. So we're hoping, and I haven't changed my hours yet because I don't have budget yet for '25, so I'm hoping after today I will. And then we'll look at our hours for '25 with the staffing we have. So we are still down 140-hour a week position. So we'll see what we can, what we can do in 2025. So we're hoping to open more hours, but right now we just, like literally she started last week. So it took a while to get it hired, so.
So the question from Ms. Katie, how many, how many staff do you have working at the library right now, including the one you just started on Monday?
10, as of last Monday.
Thank you, Jody.
And they're not all full-time. So if you do full-time equivalent, we've probably got seven. So remember that I have, not all my staff are full-time. I have two that are under 20, I have two 30-hours, I have one maintenance person at 40, and now I have three library staff at 40 and two clerks at 40. So they're not, so full-time equivalent is probably around seven. I'd have to do the new math, but yeah, so that's where we are.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Katie?
Yes.
And then my last thing is would it be helpful to have a group of educated citizens to meet and make recommendations to the city council? Not people like me, but people who know finance, building, employee relationships, et cetera. And they could be volunteers, just like on every other commission that you have. Just an idea. I think that would be helpful for you. So thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Ms. Katie. Okay, any other questions? Please state your name for the record and welcome to the truth and taxation meeting.
Greg Lency. I don't think we answered her question on the ITMEC, and I can do that. So in three years, in three months, that's lost $6,600,000.
Mr. Mayor, I believe he's out of order. He does not...
So that goes, breaks down to anywhere between $150,000 and $200,000 a month or $5,400 a day. That's the, as of this year, projecting into December, it's gonna lose a million and a half dollars this year.
Mr. Lency?
So when I speak, I can get interrupted. I can't speak. Counselor Johnson?
I believe you're out of order with your information, sir.
Oh, really?
Okay, that's enough.
Okay.
Just relax for a moment.
You don't wanna hear that.
Mr. Lency, relax for a moment.
I'm fine.
Apparently.
I'm fine. You just don't, you guys don't wanna hear it.
So see, Mr. Lency, that's not true. So all I'm asking you to do is just relax for a moment. We'll get through this, but I don't want this bickering back and forth. It's unprofessional. I don't know. We have a policy.
Okay, so I'm just going off your profit and loss statements that come out monthly from the ITMEC?
Well, see, Mr. Lency...
So the revenue and the expenses are right there every month.
But we allow you to speak, but you know, let's do this in orderly fashion, not over talking everybody. It doesn't help at all.
I was talking.
Well, he asked for a point of order and under the rules of this council, I have to address the point of order, which I'm doing right now. So if you just hold your comments in advance for a couple minutes, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, mayor. I would like the city staff to answer what the city's position on those numbers are prior to getting Mr. Lency's numbers that he has calculated himself.
Mr. Lency, just hold your comments in advance. Just stay at the podium, please, if you would. So Sherry, can you give us any specific information about the ITMEC, the information that Mr. Lency is disseminating? Could you kind of give us a little recap there and then we'll continue with Mr. Lency's comments?
Mayor, council, thank you, and Mr. Lency. We still hold our monthly budget meetings and I don't believe you were at the last one in November.
It's all public information.
We did go through all the departments, including the Iron Trail Event Center. We have not transferred in the $985,000 yet. We will do that at year-end.
Yeah, it will be, though?
Yes, it will be. That's budgeted that way. It's in the general fund for 2024, as it is also for 2025. So on your 1.2 million that you say is in the hole, you have to put a million back in there. So it's probably...
The million comes out of our budget. It doesn't come from revenue.
Let her finish first, Mr. Lency, please, please. And then you can argue it.
Sorry, mayor.
Please go ahead.
It is in the general fund budget, which is part of your levy, which I think we've stated before, and I don't mind stating it again. A long time ago, when we had the old miners, we spent close to a million dollars. It was around $900,000 for a park, for the recreation. Park is separate now. It has three employees in it. All of the recreation employees are now moved over to the ITMEC. And I apologize for abbreviating that. I should say Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So what we did was just move that expense that we've always calculated for 20-some years now that I've been here, probably longer. We just moved that over as a transfer in at year-end, which we thought maybe we should start, you know, asking the council to transfer it in every month. But it's just a lot easier to do it at year-end, transfer in. So you have to, don't... So you have to, don't forget that. Add that in there. The deficit isn't $500,000 a month. The deficit most likely will be around $300,000 to $400,000 this year.
Okay. Was the Miners Memorial Enterprise Fund designed to generate income?
No. The Miners Memorial.
It was built, it was.
It was.
Well, it sat in the Recreation Department.
When it was originally built, it was an enterprise fund, then it.
I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Is the ITMEC enterprise fund designed to generate income?
It is not an enterprise fund. It is a special revenue fund.
Special revenue fund, designed to generate income, sold to the taxpayers as a convention center designed to generate income.
We are in our third year out of five years.
Years and three months.
Out of five years. We were not to experience a profit in the porfumia financials by Isaac Sports until the fifth year. I believe we are on the right track. Yes, we will be reorganizing. That is one area we are looking at. We're not just spending money willy-nilly.
I understand that. I'm simply answering Kathy's question. So a million-dollar transfer comes out of our budget, which could go to buy an ambulance or a fire truck or any number of other things.
And, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Sherri, please.
And I think this is a healthy discussion, but I also want you to look on that sheet, I probably left it up there. The yellow sheet on the expense side, wonderful. On the expense side of it, you're going to see that we spend over a million dollars a year out of the general fund budget for retirees' insurance. That's our OPEB liability.
And they're due.
Okay, let me finish.
They're entitled to that.
They're entitled to that, but I am not done. Let me finish. We also have an investment back in 2007. We had $700,000 in our insurance, because at one time we were self-insured, health insurance. The insurance committee voted to invest that. We moved it and our para administers the account investment. I just got the statement today. It's over $4 million. Now, we could legally, because the way the trust fund is set up, take a million dollars out of that and pay this if we really got in a pinch, but we're not in a pinch. We will make money. We will make money. I think I've told you this before.
What year would you anticipate we're going to turn a profit?
I would hope after year five, if not sooner, because we do have some reorganization issues and ideas that some of the council are aware of it.
That's two years from now.
I know, but we've actually seen the expense reduced over the three years. I want you to look, the first year we started, it was a huge loss. Second year, it was smaller. This year is going to be smaller.
Would you admit that that's probably a pretty good issue that we're going to have to look at and address?
No doubt, and also is the ambulance is an issue.
Okay.
And that, you know, we need not just say, hey, the one year shot in the arm by the legislation down there, the state, where they really need to take a long, hard look at what we are servicing. We're not just servicing here. We are going out. And then, you know, I've had a discussion with you about the mutual aid. This ladder truck, it's over $2 million. When other communities are on fire, we're going to be using that ladder truck.
We were talking about the ITMEC.
So let me, let me. Yeah, let me.
Comes together.
Now, let me just kind of recap the question that Ms. Katie had and that Mr. Lency is answering. So there are a lot of factors. The duty of this elected body along the system is to try to make that Iron Trail Motors Event Center as close to even as we possibly can. Now, I know this is the city of Virginia. It's not Duluth Deck, it's not Englested Arena, it's not the Sanford Center up in there. We're all losing money. So our job is to try to find, we have the financial performer, we're making adjustments to that financial performer, try to reduce our expenses and increase our revenue. Yes, we are, we are trying to do as much as we can to improve the revenue stream there. There's some adjustments that are being made from a staffing level, adjustments being made from a contract level, and adjustments that are being made from outside economic drivers, which would be the new hotel and other things, which are factors along the road that we have to try to do whatever we can to anticipate and prevent, and prevent the deficit from getting worse instead of improving toward a revenue stream. So all these economic factors are involved as well. Are we, we're on the, we're on the path to try to do that. Will we be profitable in two years, like you asked? I don't know, but we're heading in the right direction. And this Iron Trail Motors Event Center is an amenity, an amenity for this community. It's not just about the revenue. Alcott Park doesn't generate revenue, really. Our Public Works Department doesn't generate revenue. None of those things that we do in this city generates revenue. This is an amenity that we provide. There's an economic driver factor that's not involved in that, and so all those are factors moving forward, and all those are in congruence with one another to try to make this a better place for people to live and work, and this is an amenity they reprovide. And do we need to do more improvements, as we said, to try to improve the revenue? Yes, we do, and we're trying to do that now, and we'll continue to try to do that. And so by year seven, we're hoping to have, you know, a really good handle on things. Hopefully, we'll have the hotel. Hopefully, there'll be the extended stay, things will be up, the armory will be up and running, too. So all those are economic factors that help support any use of that Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So, Mr. Lency.
When it was proposed by our developer, did they define that as an amenity?
Yes.
They did?
Yes.
That it would be supported and funded by the taxpayer?
Yes.
Or was it sold as a convention center that was going to generate revenue and pay for itself?
Well, it was, it was touted as a convention center, but the.
So I don't remember on any of the paperwork that I got at my house before I voted yes on that, where it said, we're going to pay for that building out of taxpayers' money forever and ever and ever. It was sold as a convention center, as a revenue fund that was going to generate money. So it's just a concern to me and every other taxpayer in this city, when the taxes go up on my house and we're losing a million dollars there, you know, isn't it a legitimate question by a citizen to come up and bring that up? Or, I'm still speaking, please.
Sure.
Please.
You asked a question I was going to answer.
Just give me another minute, will you?
Sure, I'll give you, I'll give you one more minute.
The, fine, start the clock. The auditor told us we lost $4.7 million on our audit this year. I'll sit down, you can explain, please, where those losses were and what we're doing to correct the losses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lency. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just ask, Mr. Lency, that you not speak for all taxpayers. You are one taxpayer who shows up, and I appreciate you showing up. I know many taxpayers who are very happy with what's happening in town and understand that it's a process and it takes time. Every meeting we had for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center talked about a five-year to seven-year window, every single one. They are, you're presenting this as a mutually exclusive, either it's a revenue generator or it's an amenity. It is both. It does generate revenue. We just approved a contract tonight for another sponsorship. Our community believes in this building. We have sponsorships all over the place. We have sponsorship on glass that you brought forward. We have sponsorships on walls. It's a process, and it is following the process, and we are doing a great job in this council as balancing that. We are learning how to run a multimillion-dollar convention center. It takes time, and I think we're doing a very good job. I think our staff have done phenomenal. Once we got a person in there who understands marketing and they know how to go out and sell, we've gotten many sponsorships. We've got great big things happening in there. We've got little tiny things happening in there. So the picture you're painting up here is not necessarily the one that everybody sees, and I just want to point out that there's many people in this town who see what it is and what it's going to be, and I appreciate that when you speak, you speak for the people you talk to, not for the people I talk to. Thank you.
So, Mr. Lency, I want to thank you for coming up and expressing your views. We certainly understand that. Just trying to maintain a professional decorum as we discuss these things. The questions you have are valid questions. The questions that you have need to be answered, and we are trying to answer those questions and will continue to do so, but we don't know what the future brings. We don't know how we're going to be two years from now or three years from now. We're just going to try to maintain a semblance of, of an order so we can try to identify and stay in the lane and try to reduce our expenses and increase revenue with that Iron Trail Motors Event Center, with the economic drivers and all the other things that we have at our disposal to do so. And if we're unable to do that, shame on us, but we'll, we're doing our best effort to do that. Like I said before, there's a lot of people out there that, we voted yes, we all voted yes for that, so it's not just to generate revenue, it's also an economic driver, too. So I appreciate you coming in, Ms. Lency. Thank you. Ms. Katie?
So, no one answered my question. Is this levy going to increase every year? Are we ever going to get to the point where it's zero?
Well, as, it depends upon the economics of the year, and what the citizens want. So if expenses, I'll give you one example, just one example. Our workers' compensation insurance last year was $450,000, somewhere in that area, maybe a little bit less, a little bit more. For 2025, workers' company insurance doubled, over $900,000. So it's, it's an unfunded mandate by the state. So we don't know. These expenses rise, we have to make adjustments to those expenses. There's only two ways to do that, or a combination of the two. Raise the levy, cut expenses. So when we cut expenses, where do we cut? Do we cut salary benefits for our employees? Do we cut our employee staff? By co-employing staff, we cut services. So those are all factors, and they all kind of work together. But to answer your question, we don't know what the levy is going to bring in, too. We know what our expenditures are with the increase in the data collection by the state of Minnesota for the police, for the body cameras, and for the cloud. That's going to be astronomical, and so we don't know what those costs are. But when we get those costs, we have to incorporate that, and if we're going to have a full-time police department, a full-time fire EMS system, we have to absorb those unfunded mandates and all those increases in costs associated with that, and we have to add that into the budget, and that should determine where we're at with our levy. And the other piece is, is to try to continue to reduce our debt service as much as we can.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to encourage this council to start looking at some real cuts, if that's freezing, you know, hiring freeze, whatever it is. And I still think that a commission of people that have a lot of experience with budget, finance, building, all of that, would be really helpful to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katie. Okay, anybody else, and I want to get up and speak, you're welcome to come forward. Please state your name for the record and welcome to the council meeting, or the Truth in Taxation meeting, excuse me. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Emily Barto, and I have a small counseling office here in Virginia, and we just started one in Evolith. And I am coming because it sounds like you guys are really interested in getting, you know, more businesses to come into the area. However, I got my proposed taxes, so I only rent. We are at the Arrowhead Center, which that building is very, very worn out. I guess we'll just say it needs a lot of repairs. I'm surprised. I guess it's been valued at whatever it is valued at. And so for my small section that I'm renting, it looks like the taxes are proposed at $3,596, which makes it then like an additional $300 a month that I'm adding on top of my rent, which to me just feels awfully high because the space that we're renting is probably about the size of half of this room. So it just, I guess I'm wondering, is this accurate? Is that like what one would expect as a business owner to be looking at kind of that price for just the tax piece?
So, to answer your question, Ms. Barto, we have a levy, and the levy is that your property taxes are based on the levy. So whatever the levy is, the total estimated market value, but we don't set the taxes as far as the assessed value of your property. We don't, we don't do that. We don't have a city assessor anymore. So assessing the value of that building or the value of your property or how that building owner designates what your tax burden is going to be based upon what they pay for that building, that St. Louis County sets the assessed value. They set the value.
I'm sorry, where do I go from here, then? Because that was kind of my, I mean, I'm just basically reading the paperwork, and it's, you know, says to, my options are to come here to this meeting at 601.
Okay, so this is the Truth in Taxation meeting for we set our annual budget.
Okay.
And what we're going to, or our levy's going to, our levy's going to be to operate our entire city for 2025. Now, I have these business cards from St. Louis County, Mr. Brian Graehack, and he has indicated and given permission that if anybody has any questions about assessments of property and the property taxes they pay, you may contact him.
Okay.
I will give you this card.
Okay.
And you can contact him. I'll bring it right down to you.
Okay. Good job on the splash pad, by the way, though. That is exciting.
Well, excuse me?
The splash pad? I said, good job on that. That's exciting.
It is. We're working, we're working hard on that, so.
Okay.
Mr. Graehack has indicated that if you have any questions at all about your property taxes, what you're paying, please give him a call, and he'll sit down with you, explain the whole thing.
Okay, thank you. I will follow up with him.
Very good. Thank you. You're very welcome. Thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to respond.
Oh, do you want to talk to Ms. Barto?
I just wanted to respond.
Okay, Ms. Barto, would you come forward, please? Just one moment, if you have a minute, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm not trying to segue here. I just wanted to get some information. So you said it was an additional $3,596.
Yeah.
What is your square footage, where you're at?
So that, I actually had just messaged them on the way here today because I feel like there is potentially an issue because we share like a waiting room space with Project Care, and so I'm wondering if they're having me pay for the entire thing. I think because Project Care is a nonprofit, so they maybe don't have to pay, but I'm wondering if there is potentially an issue with how they set up the square footage because it seems awfully high for a small amount of space, and I'm not sure offhand exactly how many square feet I have.
Okay. But then I think that, I think the mayor's right, that would be up to the owner of the building, how they assess you, the tax portion, but I do think that's very, very high.
Okay.
And I would encourage you to explore options on Chestnut Street or there and around.
Okay.
That there may be some space that might be more conducive.
Okay.
And maybe less expensive.
Yeah.
And the, I mean, that's another sidebar, but I just wanted to offer that.
Yeah.
At the, I think it was the U.S. Bank Building in the basement, there was that free clinic. There, so I know there's probably some nice professional spaces.
Yeah, I've definitely been exploring a lot of options, even potentially building in the future, but we just.
And if you do, please attend, we meet as a VITA board the first Thursday of every month.
Okay.
If you'd like any information on anything economic development-wise in the city of Virginia, I would encourage you to attend one of those meetings and just get some information or find out more.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you for waiting so patiently.
All right, thank you. Any other questions regarding the Truth in Taxation as we continue to discuss this before we set our levy? Counselor, beyond, I'm, Counselor Motley?
So I got on the council almost two years ago, and I've been told that this, the hot topic of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, five-year plan, five-year plan, five-year plan. So I am hope, I am optimistic that. So I am hope, I am optimistic that what I have been told is going to come to fruition. There has been some changes since I've been on the council over there, and without a doubt, there is reorganization happening in several areas of this city. But as I have learned, things don't go nearly as fast in city government, and it's not just because it's Virginia, it's just how it goes. It is a process of trying to change things, and I am hopelessly very optimistic that some reorganizational pieces that the city is looking at are going to be to the benefit of potentially reducing the taxes to the taxpayers. So I'm hoping that will give you a little bit of peace of mind, but there are things happening quietly behind closed doors. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Counselor Motley. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So our, the item 8.10 is the resolution approving the levy, but then underneath it is the budget discussion. Can we discuss budget before levy so we can understand?
Here, go ahead, whatever you like.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, please do. Counselor Paulson?
So I just would like to go on the handout Sheri gave us. It's got our, it does have the budget sheet in there, and I'm not seeing page numbers. So Sheri, it's just, it's the first one, general fund, and it, our net operating levy. Then you've got for every 1% increase, it's the $55,000. So I appreciate, you know me with the percentage points, I appreciate that number being referenced on there. But if we go down to the special revenue on the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, we're including, again, the transfer in of $985,000, and that's the same amount from 2024 that we had budgeted for 2024. I just have a question, then, why, under the actual percentage, it's a decrease of, it says negative 6%? What caused that to decrease? Did we, did they decrease the overall operating budget?
No. If you take, oh, sorry, Mayor.
Sheri?
If you look on 2024's column, right next to it.
Yep.
You'll see the revenue decreased by $140,000. You see that? We had, this year, we had it budgeted at 2.1 million, and next year, we have it budgeted at 2 million.
So that was, so 2024 projected revenue budget was.
A little higher.
Higher, and we're projecting a lower revenue stream for 2025.
Correct, because 2024, I think when we went through the budget meetings, it was.
Some of those were not attainable.
Right. It was shoot the moon, and it was just way out of.
Okay, so that equals 6% less, then? We decreased our revenue projections by 6%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're still doing that operating transfer in, and then if you flip over to the actual, the actual special fund, special revenue fund page, I think it's like second to the last page, it's showing then the overall 2024, 2025 budget for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center in that special revenue fund is $2,244,543. And then right underneath that, Sheri, it's in red, 215,589, or 598. So does that mean we are still going to be short 200?
Or if we continue the way we're going, but.
On that trajectory.
But like Counselor Motley stated, we have some reorganization, and yes, it is also my personal hope that we follow through with what we had originally said.
So part of that, part of that projection, oh, Sheri, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Sheri. You want to finish? I'm sorry. But I just, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, so we would still have to work towards, and just to segue and maybe a little bit answer Kathy Katie's question, is what are we putting in then over and above the 985 once we do transfer it in? What's the deficit going to be for the year ending 2024? And I did miss the 20, I missed the November financials, and what I pulled up on my phone was just October, so I don't know where we're at to budget right now. But we'll be transferring in more, or putting in more money on top of the $985,000 transfer in.
Sheri?
Mayor and Council, Counselor Paulson, the 984 will be a physical transfer. You will see that, it'll come as a resolution at year end when the auditors do, I call it a housekeeping resolution, final transfers. But what will show up is the deficit. And until.
We are expecting, do you know what approximate deficit that is then, year end?
I think I mentioned it earlier to Mr. Lindsay. It was around 350, 400,000. That is just my projection, okay? Maybe something will be different, maybe it'll be better. Maybe they'll cut somewhere before that.
So I'm just trying to do a comparison of '24 to '25. So we're projecting still a deficit in '25 of 215,000?
Yes, but that could change.
Okay, and does, that's where I'm getting, does that include, does these budget numbers include some of our discussion about reorganization? Does some of that, is some of that math incorporated in here?
Some of it is.
Regarding reorganization?
Not all of it is, because at the time that I did do the budget, I don't believe the concessions were part of it, and we're hoping to make revenue on those concessions.
Okay, so we, even if we, I'm, I would love to shave off percentage points, but, but what I'm saying is, you haven't, or it hasn't been, not you, it hasn't been completely calculated with the, if we do this, the concessions, what we're going to be generating in revenue, or is that in this 2025?
No.
So that would be an additional, possibly to cover the deficit?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And any other reductions we can do to help break even.
Okay, that answers that. And then, does this overall budget then of our, the general fund? Yes, let me just, I guess it really wouldn't matter what department. So say we're in, we're having discussions that are causing a little bit of, I guess we're just having conversations right now, and does this budget reflect, the 2025 budget proposed here, does that reflect any changes to our garbage service?
No. The garbage service is still in there, you'll see it's under solid waste.
Okay, so if, if we were to move down a different path for garbage services, we could potentially be recognizing quite a bit.
Quite a bit.
In savings.
In savings, but also.
And residual.
I think really some fine service to the citizens. I would love to have that service in my area.
Correct, but I think I'm talking mainly just about the numbers here, so we would actually see a reduction in that, that budget line item for that department.
Yes, because what's, what's going to happen here pretty soon? If we don't do something with the garbage, we don't have enough, as you can see, there's only like 48,000 projected. We don't have enough to cover a recycling truck, we don't have enough to cover new garbage trucks. Also, Britt, help me out here, what's on the state, we're probably going to end up either going back to blue bags, which I don't know how everybody feels about that, probably going to end up having to come up with some form of weight and volume and paying higher fees.
So we are working towards decreasing expenditures or expenses.
Yes.
But keeping services, nobody's losing any services, but we are really working diligently to try to save the taxpayers' dollars in terms of not having to increase the levy every time, every year.
We're trying to work smarter, not harder.
Exactly. My question, which is now going to be a challenging one perhaps, could we look at removing that from the budget?
Eventually, yeah, eventually.
For 2025?
If anything that we do in 2025 that reduces the budget is going to make your general fund look healthier.
Okay.
It's going to be just healthier.
And then at the end of the 2025 cycle, does that just roll over? How does that work? I'm just trying to say, if we do, if we recognize those savings, but we have budgeted much higher, what happens with that overage for the following fiscal year?
I know people don't like to hear it, but in the past, we used to have a surplus in the general fund. Surplus.
Okay.
And that's just like your checkbook at home. You don't spend all the money in there, you've got a little buffer.
Then in theory, in '26, could you have a negative levy?
I can't guarantee that because, you know, the cost of things, and you've got.
Goes up.
Got an ambulance coming up in 2026.
But we are working really hard at trying to reduce expenses and maintaining all of our services at the same time.
And I just want to add that we also, both me and Britt have invested. We invest. So we didn't need the $21 million, so we invested it. Not all of it. We saved some for the public safety, and we have laddered the CDs. We will make a small amount of interest, but at least we'll make something. I mean, 143,000 can go for FF and E, something.
Exactly. My last question is, this is a little nitpicky item. It's under miscellaneous. On the Range Rec Civic Center, which is the curling club, did they agree to allow us to pay less amount than $20,000?
I have a meeting tomorrow, four o'clock. Did have a discussion about the costs associated. We are committed to pay X amount of dollars. We'd have to change that agreement because if we reduce ours, the other committees get a reduction as well.
They're currently operating in a positive cash flow.
They have for a long time.
So I think that that needs to be revisited.
Well, I think the joint powers agreement has to be revisited. That's how we reduce.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And I think that was the other, the only other item. Other than that, though, Sheri, the items that we're talking about in terms of, I wouldn't say reduction, I would say maybe some reorganization within the, within the, any departments that we've discussed, those are not reflected in this 2025 budget that you have laid out. We would be recognizing in actual savings if those things come to fruition.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Okay, any other questions with respect to information regarding the budget or the 2025 levy proposal? Counselor Motley?
No questions, just reiterating, reorganization is happening, and I'm actually kind of excited to see what it looks like at this time next year. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Counselor Johnson?
We need a motion to close the public meeting. I will move to close the Truth in Taxation meeting as there are no more other questions or concerns.
Okay, Counselor Johnson moves to close the Truth in Taxation meeting. Is there support for that?
Support.
Support by Counselor Motley? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The Truth in Taxation meeting is now closed. Thank you. Okay, let's resume the council meeting, and we'll move back to item 8.10, which is adopt the resolution approving the 2025 levy. Is there a motion to approve the 2025 levy? Is there a motion to approve the 2025 lever? Is it?
5.5.
Sheri? The motion would be.
It has to be at the 8%, but overall, it's 5.5.
Motion stands to approve by Counselor Freely. Is there support? Or support by Counselor Johnson? Is there any further discussion? Counselor Freely? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Would item 8.11, adopt the resolution approving the 2025 budget as presented?
I will move the budget.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the 2025 budget. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Motley? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by, I'm sorry, Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, and to Counselor Paulson's point, the budget is a living document. As things change throughout the year, we can make adjustments, we can shuffle money around, which happens on a regular basis anyway, but this is just the snapshot right now for next year, as best as we can foresee the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Sheri?
No, I'll wait till you're done. Not in this motion.
All those in favor, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one question, Sheri. On the, I know you didn't want to put it in, under economic development, the profit that we made off the, the proceeds we made off of the sale of the 1404 building to, was 180, or was it? Was it 1? 280, 140, 140,000? And you would like to invest that? Does that need to be part of this earmark somehow?
Britt, help me out here. We put that 140,000 was the last directive in the jump, in the budget, and it was going to be going under economic development for Britt. Under the economic miscellaneous, you see 100,000.
And thanks, Sheri. You're talking about the budget for '25, and you're talking about a '24 earmark. So what we'll need to do is, we need to, when the auditors come to do that, that cleanup resolution we do, we do the transfer of funds and stuff, we'll need to make sure we earmark that fund, that money that comes in.
So where does that money go now?
Right now, it just sits in the general fund.
Okay.
We had already have a motion from you guys that we're going to be using it for economic development, so we will have the auditors actually create that entry, that this is reserved for these projects, and so then.
And then does it, does it need to be reflected in this document here?
No, that's just the budget, that's of new money, money that we're going to have next year for.
Okay, but are we going to invest those dollars, and do we need a resolution to do that as well?
After, I, well, I don't know. Can we do it now? It's sitting in the general fund right now.
We sure could. We sure could have a resolution to invest it. Sheri can.
You want to do that at the next, at the next week's meeting?
I won't be here, but if. We'll get a resolution together. We'll call.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're doing that.
100%.
If it's a 2025, that it needs to.
And then, so what you'll see is, you'll see, they'll end up creating a reserved for, I can't even think of the word, but there is a reserved portion they do in certain funds for dedicated projects like that.
Okay.
So it would be dedicated for a special.
Okay.
So you guys would basically have to give us permission to use.
To use it.
That money.
Perfect.
And the parameters you gave us.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Counselor Paulson. So it has been moved and supported to adopt the resolution approving the 2025 budget for the city of Virginia. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll move to item, go back, start with committee reports. I think we're at 9.1L.
Correct, we are at 9.1L. 9.1L was a discussion regarding the figure skating pictures that were at the, at MAC, sorry, the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. It was movement supported to table a discussion on the figure skating pictures. We had a discussion regarding our setting up a meeting, so it was movement supported to set a special council meeting for next Tuesday, December 17th at 8:00 a.m. We'll get these final things together for you guys for that next meeting. I don't need any action on that, I just wanted to point that out to everybody in the public that our last meeting of the year will be next Tuesday at 8:00 a.m.
So it is eight, not nine?
Eight.
Eight o'clock on the 17th. Thank you.
We did go into closed session at 11:31 to talk with our attorney on potential litigation items. When we came out of the closed session, it was movement supported to direct staff to follow up on discussion items that were discussed during the closed session.
So move.
A move to approve by Counselor Johnson under 9.1N is. A move to approve by Councilor Johnson on our 9.1N. Is there support?
Support.
By Councilor Motley. Is there any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
No further items from that meeting.
No further items. Thank you. Item 10, Commission Liaison Reports. Does any council want to give a commission liaison report this evening? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. The Human Rights Commission met the first Monday of December. Looking forward to next year, we have, we are back up to three members. We're still seeking one, possibly two, human rights commissioners. And they've started doing some plans for Martin Luther King Day in February and looking at other no-cost activities that the Human Rights Commission can do around town to promote equality, justice. We will also be updating the, the section of the code that talks about what the Human Rights Commission does. It's from 1970 something. So at our next meeting, we'll be updating it and reflecting again more accurately what the Human Rights Commission does and more importantly, taking out things that we are not quali, they are not qualified to do that the state handles at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Johnson. Councilor Biondich?
And I was unable to attend the planning and zoning meeting, so I will have Jenny give an update on that.
Jenny, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we had a planning and zoning meeting on Monday, December 2nd. We did not have any public hearings, but we did discuss some old business and one item of new business. The old business that we discussed was Chapter 11 land use and zoning regulations. We're continuing our work on that and maybe, maybe moving forward in segments instead of a full ordinance review, but more to come on that. And then the new business, new item of business was the FEMA flood plain ordinance, which we're considering adopting and we actually have to have in place by March 25th, 2025. The discussion at planning and zoning was the initial step to move forward in working on that ordinance, which will also come forward. I believe that is all we talked about at that meeting. One note, we are also seeking commission members. So if you know of anyone or if you're interested, please contact Pam. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may just segue into a longtime commission member for planning and zoning, passed away last week or so. Mr. Don Bird. And he was, served as a commissioner on planning zoning for 26 years, 27 years. He made an amazing job and very, a very good commissioner, a very nice man. He's just a great loss for the community, a loss for his family, and we extend our condolences for your loss. Councilor Biondich?
Thank you. And being the liaison for that commission, I learned a lot and I really valued his knowledge. He could pull things out of his memory bank that he had made decisions on and why he made them. Very kind and conscientious about the job he, he did on that commission. So I, I sent sympathies to the family as well. He was a wonderful man. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Biondich. Okay, any other commission liaison reports today? We'll move to 11, department head reports. Britt, anything else you want to bring up? Anything from legal?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Pam, I know you have something you'd like to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, our reorganizational meeting will be on Thursday, January 2nd at 9:00 AM. So we'd like to make a motion to that effect.
So moved. Move to set the reorganizational meeting for January 2nd, 2025 at 9:00 AM by Councilor Johnson. Is there support? By Councilor Freely. Any further discussion? A hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And then just one other thing regarding the commissions. I did put an ad in the paper, so please feel free to contact me for a foreign application and they are also on the website.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you. Sherry, anything else that you, thanks for your presentation this evening and filling those questions?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I just want to clear something so that there's no miscommunication here. Councilor Freely, you had asked if it's a 5.5. Yes, that is, the overall levy is the 5.5, but I have to actually report to the state what the general fund is, exactly how this resolution is. So you passed the resolution, yes. The general fund is at 8% more than last year, but because of the reduction in indebtedness, it dropped it to 5.5. Also too, next week, I will be out of state, but I will be calling in for the eight o'clock meeting. It'll be nine o'clock where I am, so I'll be well rested.
Thank you, Sherry. Jenny, anything else to bring forth for the council meeting this evening? Seeing none, okay. Jody, Urbanowski, our library director, Jody?
Hi. So as we get towards the holidays and also kids are on break, we do have a few things happening in the library, hopefully to help keep them a little bit occupied. This week though, because we are still in school, we are doing card making after school on Wednesday, starting about 2:30. We do have a book club. It's bring your own book and recommend reading, especially as we get darker early. People are looking for new books. And we do have our last active play on Friday for our, our young, our littlest library patrons, and that's from 10:30 to 11:30. We have one last Rubik's Cube tournament that is going to be on the 18th, so all are welcome. I will tell you that I think an eight-year-old won it last time and he solved it in like under 20 seconds or something. It might even have been faster than that. But our winter escape room will be open on the 23rd, the 26th, the 27th, the 28th, and the 30th, and then it'll also be open into the New Year. So as kids are on break, they'll have, so call the library if you want to do the escape room. It is winter themed. I have no clue because I have not been part of any of the planning, but I know there are at least three rooms that you have to escape through and yes, we will give you hints. It does fill up pretty fast, so give the library a call at 218-748-7525 to sign up your group. You need at least two people and I think we max it at six. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, would item 12, council reports? Does any council have to report they'd like to give this evening? Council Johnson?
First of all, I'd like to recognize that Annie Bachsneider, Councilor-elect, is here observing tonight. Thanks for being here. Nice to see you. And I've got three things, and Mayor, if you're going to mention these, I apologize too, but got the opportunity to see shop with a cop at Target this week. They were also at Walmart. And it was really kind of special for us because one of my kids remembered doing shop with a cop in a previous time. So it was a really, it really makes a big difference to kids in need. So that was really cool. Stuffed the ambulance was, they were, they were busy. That's all I have to say. I just, the engagement with our public safety and the community, that public outreach and those positive situations really helps with, with the interaction with the public, especially kids. And my, my last little thing I have here is, last week, on the news, there was a feature about the Rock Ridge North Side Elementary School. And in the new school, they are doing a lot of community engagement. They are working not only within the school to keep it clean and do jobs and help out. They're also, now that they're back in town, going across the street and shoveling. They're shoveling at the library. When it gets a little bit of snow, they're shoveling sidewalks. So really teaching our students, third through sixth grade, what it means to be a community member and how to, hopefully someday, sit in these chairs and help Virginia become a better place as well. That's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Johnson. Okay, Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report, but I do have a request. And I had a few questions, or this from a few people. This is one question. What is the status of our outdoor ice rinks and when will they be open?
The staff is working on them. We had, we were working on them last Friday. That warm weather we had this weekend didn't help. So they're going to get back out. They've been working on snow removal yesterday and today, and they're hoping to get back out this week. If it stays as cold as it's supposed to be, which is supposed to be zero tonight, we may be coming up really quick with them, but they are working on them. The staff has been out there diligently getting them ready. So we're hoping to have them open in the next week or two. We still are taking applications for rink attendants. So if you know anybody that likes to, like to work rink attendant, it's a great job for the first-time students that looking for something after school. It's not hard. It's just a little bit of shoveling, helping tie some skates, making sure nobody hurts themselves on the ice. It's a really fun job and it's a great time. So feel free to give us a call if you're interested.
Thank you. I just have one poor thing to add in that it was between meetings and we always want to support the people to protect our city, protect our county, protect our nation. So December 7th, 1941, was a day that was lived on in infamy. There was an attack on Pearl Harbor where so many souls were killed, particularly the one who was lost and then found in the USS Arizona when it sank, Mr. Dante Tini. So for those of you who remember December 7th, 1941, we appreciate that. And for those who didn't and now are now remembering, just, just keep that in your thought and maybe say a prayer for a veteran. So that's all I have. So anything else to come before the council meeting tonight? Council Freely?
Just one last question. I would just want to thank Britt and Sherry specifically for all the preparation and the presentation and the questions and answering today. You did a great job and I appreciate all the work that you put into that to appease the questions of taxpayers that are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so, any other things to come before the council? I'll let you know, Council-elect Bachsneider, you'll be sitting in this last chair here. Unless everybody wants to reorganize, they're welcome to do that. So thank you. Appreciate that. We welcome you formally on January the 2nd. So we, if there's nothing else to come before the council meeting tonight, we will stand adjourned to our next council meeting, which is January 14th, 2025, 5:30 PM. I'm here in the council chambers. Thank you, everybody. Have a great holiday season. We stand adjourned.